I don't know. Clara doesn't look happy.
Hands up.
It's our old thing.
Hands up.
So he's going to stay from here.
Hmm?
It's just like the biggest green.
Yeah, there's no happy.
You know, you've got a lot of the other stuff where you can see it.
I'm always happy.
You should see my work computer, my monitor. Yeah, I like this one.
So serious. Sir, you haven't been a response. But more.
I guess I'm.
You think I'm blind? Isn't that nice?
Getting up about once an hour is good for that.
Yeah, it is.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Come on.
We had the conversation with.
Half an hour?
No. Oh, yeah.
Wow, you've got some super eyes.
That would be a super contest.
Angry as he was, anyway, it's your word.
And he wants to, well.
Yes, we do.
I asked you so.
You have a big agenda next week.
Here and a half of them.
Seven thirty, okay.
All right.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Park District, State and Park District.
That's what it is, okay. I just suddenly noticed. The role, please. Seifert.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Belkey.
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, announcements of a general nature from the alderman. Does anyone have anything they'd like to address? Then I'd like to open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience wanted to address the city council on any subject matter? It doesn't have to be something on the agenda. It could be any subject matter. Okay. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of March second, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? The role, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marquess.
Aye.
MacIver.
Epstein.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Alderman, Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a phone call from one of my neighbors on Pine Court. Interesting scenario. Just calling me up to let me know that we had a coyote in between my neighbor's house and mine. And normally, that's not a big issue because obviously, we have coyotes throughout all of the city of Darien. And before I was going to go in and have a conversation in depth about this, my neighbor tells me the reason I'm calling, not because of the coyote, but a car had stopped, got out of the car, and actually put down a bowl of food for the coyote to eat right in front of my house. Now, when I was thinking about this, and I brought this up to Brian, you know, if they're going to feed a coyote, they're going to end up, you know, wanting to stay. You cut off the food supply, they're going to go somewhere else. But then, you know, bringing it up to Brian, if somebody decided that they might want to poison a coyote by putting something in there, for all intensive purposes, if a dog or anything else came through and decided to eat out of that bowl, then what happens? The point is, I brought this up to Brian, I'd like to talk about this in the future, is what is our, you know, ordinance against, you know, feeding wild animals? Do we have anything? Can we, you know, talk about this in depth? Because I continue to think that as long as we're going to have coyotes, that we can't, you know, go out and kill them. If we can turn around and cut off their food supply, I think it'd be something we should, you know, take a look at in the future, so.
I'm not sure. Do we have anything in writing about feeding wild animals?
No, I mean, we have some nuisance-type codes that might apply depending on what person left. If somebody throws out a bag of garbage, which has a lot of foodstuffs, I mean, there's some things to look at.
I mean.
The statute allows us to have an ordinance. It gets a little complicated because you still have people that are feeding birds and probably raccoons. And all that eventually gets, you know, mixed up, the food source. The animals don't care, you know, who we put it out for. They just go eat it. So we'd have to just work through some details.
I mean, the intent in this situation, if somebody's garbage blows on over and there's food out there, that happens. It happens every day. People are feeding birds, understandable. You know, feeding ducks, understandable. But if you're actually, maybe we can even have an ordinance about feeding wild, you know, coyotes or something, because I just could not believe that somebody would actually do that.
Well, most of the parks, as you might be aware, you can't feed the geese. I mean, they have that around for health reasons. So if it's something the council is interested in looking at, we can, you know, take a look at.
I think we need to find out what's out there first. If there's anything out there, I mean, that's in writing now, ordinance was.
Oh, in our code book?
Not in ours.
Oh, in others, yeah.
In others.
Yeah, I did, after Alderman Shower talked to me, I did some research. I found some codes. I know, talking to Attorney Murphy, by statute, it's allowed. There's some rules and regulations. If a municipality has ordinances like that, they can't be breed-specific. And that's in the state statute. It leads me to believe that's really for dogs, but it doesn't say it's just for dogs, so.
Well, that was my first question.
Yeah.
I don't think it could be breed-specific. I don't think that would be.
Could we do, so if they were placing food out in front of the house, is it a stretch to call that littering? And then, do you cite them for the littering aspect of it? Because typically, on a bird feeder, because my neighbor's got a bird feeder next door, but it's, you know, it's eight feet up in the air and it's, you know, it's contained and only birds can get in there. Is that something, could you utilize a littering ordinance on that? We could give a ticket and, you know, the judge would ultimately decide if it was littering or what the violation was. I mean, if we're specifically looking to deter, you know, feeding of these, of wild animals, specifically coyotes, then maybe something specific would make more sense if that's the goal. But, you know, even the backyard, the bird feeders, you know, the problem with that is the birds knock the seed all over and ultimately, other critters get in there. So it would be very hard to regulate on private property, but certainly residents or anybody putting food out for wild animals on the public property, much more easy to identify.
Right.
Throw it back to committee. Get some materials. And, yep, go back to your committee and see what you want to do with it.
Cool. Great, thank you.
Let's move on to, if there's other communications, Alderman Belkey?
Yes, we received an email from a resident on Seventy-Fourth Street calling to say thank you for the municipal services crew for clearing the snow away from around her mailbox area to make sure that, you know, the residents on that street could get access to their mail. Thank you.
Any other communications to share? Let's move on to the mayor's report. And under the mayor's report, we have the chamber update.
Good evening. The Darien Chamber of Commerce welcomes new members, Miskatonic Brewing Company, who will be opening within the next few months in Darien. Miskatonic Brewing Company is located at one thousand North Frontage Road. Please follow Miskatonic Brewing Company on Facebook for updates on construction and opening date. We'd also like to welcome State Farm Agent Nick Pitzer. Nick's office is located at eight oh five Plainfield Road in Darien. And CWA Accounting LLC, Jason Holtz. CWA Accounting is located at eighty-three oh one South Cass Avenue in Darien. So we're excited to have these new members. Early bird savings for the fifteenth annual Darien Dash ends April first. Darien Dash will be held on Sunday, May seventeenth, at Darien Community Park. To register, visit www.dariendash.com. If you're interested in sponsoring the Dash, please call the chamber office at six three oh nine six eight zero 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 four. The Darien Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the Indian Prairie Public Library for a teen summer job fair on Saturday, this Saturday, from one PM to four PM. The schedule is as follows. From one PM to two, there will be a panel discussion on what employers are looking for when they hire and what to expect from an employee. The job fair will be from two to four PM. Join us on April twenty-first for the membership luncheon at Chuck Southern Comforts Cafe. Nancy Spideau from Reference USA will educate you on finding sales leads, conduct market research, locate and research companies you want to work for, and business plan searches. Register online at darienchamber.com. Chase Bank located at seventy-five oh one Cass Avenue will celebrate their ribbon-cutting ceremony on April twenty-third. And St. John Lutheran Church will have Saturday, April fourth, from nine AM to eleven AM in their fellowship hall. They're going to have an Easter egg hunt and a puppet show, so they wanted me to mention that. And that's it.
Any questions? Any questions for Claire?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move next to the city clerk's report.
I have a couple of announcements. City offices will be closed on Friday, April third, in observance of Good Friday. And the mayor had asked me to make mention of the ballot for the consolidated general election, which will be taking place on April seventh. The candidates for mayor include Kathleen Mosel Weaver, Yorg H. Seifert. For city clerk, Joanne Regona. For city treasurer, Michael J. Corin. Alderman Ward Two, Tina M. Belkey. Alderman Ward Four, there was no candidate. Alderman Ward Six, Christine L. Collins and Sylvia MacIver. Also, I'd like to announce that early voting, there is something on Direct Connect that gives you the various locations, the location, and the times that they are open for early voting. So please check the city's website. Thank you.
The closest early voting location is over at Downers Grove City Hall.
But there's a number. I mean, there's quite a few locations, so.
I'm just saying, the closest one is at Downers Grove City Hall. Did you have another item?
No.
Okay, that was it? Okay. City administrator's report?
No report, mayor, thank you.
Okay, department head information, questions?
Madam Mayor, we're simply going to address the couple of agenda items that we had questions on earlier.
Oh, yes. I did forget to mention that under my report. Go ahead. The item, Alderman Belkey asked that you give a little bit, a brief explanation of items D, E, and F on our consent agenda.
Evening, Madam Mayor, city council, our viewing residents. A couple of items I was asked to discuss this evening. On the consent agenda, we have several things pending for board consideration, for city council consideration. The first one is a resolution authorizing the Village of Woodridge for the purposes of sharing costs for design and construction of Eighty-Third Street. This is in agreement with the Village of Woodridge referred to as an intergovernmental agreement. And what it's specifically for is the resurfacing of a portion of our roadway on Eighty-Third Street. We, the city of Darien, have a portion of it along with the Village of Woodridge. The bounds, the lines are very scattered, if you want to say it best. So there's been a good cooperation between the Village of Woodridge and us over the years in taking care of that roadway. Village of Woodridge applied in conjunction with the city of Darien for a grant. We were awarded the, Village of Woodridge is the lead agency and were awarded the award. What this hundred and fifteen thousand dollars commits us to is the resurfacing some concrete curb and gutter as well as some miscellaneous storm work. The project is supposed to be let or bid this year, and we're looking for a summer construction for Eighty-Third Street between Lamar Road and up to basically three fifty-five for the Village of Woodridge. So that's that portion. Any questions on that?
When's the letting?
I'm not sure when it is. I know they were scheduling it.
Okay. Alderman MacIver?
Is there any concern with the, what's it, Timbers Edge subdivision? It's under construction and it's going to be for some time. There's a lot of heavy hauling and truck traffic there. Is there any concern of doing the resurfacing and then having that damaged?
As a matter of fact, prior to us putting this together, one of the thought processes was when we called for a meeting with the Village of Woodridge and we asked the Village of Woodridge to talk to the builder, to provide a financial contribution for a fair share of the roadway referred to as the impact. Also, what we did is, let's say, we decided to delay construction simply for the reason due to the mass grading and a lot of the heavy equipment that you referred to. Most of the heavy, majority of the heavy equipment is out of there. Basically, what you see now is the occasional concrete truck for when a house is being built. The roadways are in as a final surfacing. So we feel that any additional impacts due to construction would be very minimal, if any at all.
Thank you.
The second item for this evening was, again, for city council consideration, is another intergovernmental agreement between the city of Darien and the county of DuPage for the purpose of sharing costs for design, construction, and construction of the Plainfield Road, Bailey Road intersection traffic signal project, and the Plainfield resurfacing project. Sit back, this one's a little more complicated. Basically, what this is, is two grants. Couple of years ago, DuPage, we and DuPage County were awarded a grant for Bailey Road and Plainfield Road for a traffic signal. In conjunction with the traffic signal, that's Project One. Project Two came about for an opportunity for the city and DuPage County to request another grant for the resurfacing of Plainfield Road, basically from Cass Avenue up to Manning Road. With that said, these are two independent projects because of two separate grants. What this resolution this evening does, it provides the city to enter an agreement with DuPage County to do certain things, and those certain things are for the signal as well as the street resurfacing. There's a whole complicated spreadsheet in conjunction with that. Basically, this falls into the next, this follows the next one, which is F, the consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for an engineering agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering. Once the IGA is approved, this engineering agreement follows. And the reason it follows is we, the city, are the lead agency for the engineering. We are the lead agency because of the traffic signal and we requested DuPage County for the resurfacing at the same time. So per the FHA guidelines, we are required to at least be the lead agency for the engineering. Of this hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for engineering, DuPage County is reimbursing the city of Darien approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand. Some of it is also taken from a water fund. Fifty thousand for engineering is due to the water fund. Will be charged to the water fund, and that's, the reason for that is there's a section of water main that your operator in charge has determined should be removed and replaced. Again, that'll be coming under a separate agenda item in the future for construction and will be an option. But that fifty thousand for engineering is being taken out of the water fund. The engineering basically includes the geometrics referred to as the Phase Two Engineering Report, which is the geometrics and design of the actual intersection for the traffic signals. The traffic signals and also the timing of traffic signals between Manning Road and Cass Avenue. Also, the removal and replacement and redesign of the sidewalk. In conjunction with that, there's certain curb and gutter removal that's required. On the Phase One slash Phase Two for the Plainfield Road resurfacing project, that is in the engineering agreement as well. What that will include, again, is the water main engineering, the locations, the street resurfacing, the profiles as they're referred to, additional, if any, additional storm work is required, and again, selective curb and gutter removal and replacement. So hopefully, I put that simply enough that everyone can understand it. Any questions?
Alderman Marquess?
Dan, you just may want to mention that this construction wouldn't take place till two thousand seventeen.
That is correct. Originally, we were looking at the Bailey Road traffic signal to be installed for two thousand sixteen, but then we were giving up some dollars because of the resurfacing project, which basically gives us a better discount for that intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I have a brief report this evening. Want to start off with an update on the burglary pattern from October and November. We, as I reported last month, we had identified some potential suspects in that, and we hope to clear several of the burglaries. We're not sure how many yet. There is going to be a viewing of burglary proceeds. We've notified some of our victims on the week of March twenty-third. They will have to contact our, anyone who's interested will have to contact our detective division first. We've also had some forensic evidence that has come back positive, and we're evaluating that to identify suspects on that as well. So we're moving right along with the case in conjunction with the task force.
Chief, is that, there's two, are you suggesting there might be two separate entities that were involved here?
No, there were, it's the same group, yes.
Okay.
And also, we've identified some suspects in the burglary to the motor vehicle, vehicle theft pattern, and we'll be proceeding with that case again with a second task force. This report is going to be largely dealing with community engagement as opposed to what we normally deal with, more crime-related stuff. This time, we're going to deal with largely community engagement. I've had a Twitter account, Chief Ernest Brown Twitter account. It's ChiefBrown@Ernest underscore Brown. Basically, what I do is kind of give residents periodic updates on some of the milestones and benchmarks that we're achieving in the Darien Police Department. I participated on the twenty-sixth at Downers Grove South in a Black History Month event where there were unsung heroes identified and honored. And it was a really nice program. It was almost exclusively Downers Grove students, but they did a, displayed a variety of talents and what have you, so. We spoke, as a matter of fact, Alderman MacIver mentioned several weeks ago at police committee meeting about Coffee with a Cop. And we reached out to the University of Illinois, who was one of the local spearheads of that. And we've got one of our officers interested in it, and so that officer's going to spearhead it and we'll be moving right along, excuse me, right along with that project. It's a national project. It was started in Hawthorne, California, several years back. And essentially, what it involves is a local business establishment here in Darien will host the event, and an officer or officers will be made available to have conversation, basically of a general nature. Questions can be answered, things like that. It's just another component of our community-oriented policing piece. Some of the new items that we've acquired, we're trying to keep the residents and the council updated on the way that we expend the seized monies. And we have a crime scene processing screen. Now, what this is, is that it's a screen, a screen that we erect. It's about six and a half feet high. And so in the event that there's some form of a traffic accident, a homicide or something, we can erect it so that the public doesn't have to see the carnage on the street. And our last homicide, that was a domestic homicide during the course of time that the deceased was being, the body and the scene were being processed, the body laid out in the open. And so we want to prevent that, prevent folks from seeing that. One of the reasons why is that it has a tendency to desensitize the public to see that kind of carnage. And we think we can prevent crimes by just simply preventing the observation. So we purchased that. We've also purchased one radar sign, and we've been authorized to purchase a second one. The first one was deployed almost a month ago on Ripple Ridge. We found out that there was a small problem, but nothing significant. We've recently redeployed that one to Sixty-Ninth Street, and we're looking at moving it from time to time. Once we get both of them, we'll be able to do pretty long stretches, like Seventy-First Street, all the way from Clarendon Hills Road, all the way to Cass Avenue. So we're really excited about it because it gives a basic litany of information about travel speeds, travel times, things like that. So we're real excited about that. Our first classroom on Crime Free Housing was conducted this past month with Officer Nick Squares and Officer Joe Pastick. They put on a class, there were about eighteen attendees. We have two more classes to go. Those classes will be held in the evening to allow some of the folks who were unable to make it this time to appear. And we're generating quite a bit of interest in it. Even some of the folks who don't fall under the parameters of the ordinance are interested in participating in any event. The folks at Farmingdale came by, and they're already under, and some of their other locations, under a Crime Free Housing ordinance. So there's a lot of excitement about that. One of the things is of particular interest. We've, over the past few weeks, law enforcement community has been under quite a bit of scrutiny and about the conduct of officers and confrontations, physical and armed confrontations with the citizenry. And so one of the things we'd like to do is get some of our citizens in to go through our firearm simulator to get a feel for what the split-second decision-making involved in one of those armed encounters. And so what we're asking the citizens to do, if you're interested in participating in that, is to contact Rose Gonzalez and make an appointment to come in. Be about an hour-long class, and you'll get a chance to go through the simulation just like the cops would and see exactly what goes into that split-second decision-making.
Chief, you might want to explain what that is if a resident's listening, maybe they're not familiar with the simulator.
Sure. A firearm simulator places, it's an upscale video game, for lack of a better phrase, but it places the officers in a scenario that allows them to react and respond to deadly confrontations or a confrontation that may appear initially deadly but actually doesn't turn out to be. So the way the technology works is the outcome of the simulation can be changed from a deadly encounter to a non-deadly to a non-confrontational encounter, kind of like what Hollywood does with the movies on DVD now. They have alternate outcomes, or we can manipulate the outcomes of the scenarios in the simulator. And so it affords the officers and the range instructors a lot of time to train, not only the officers in how to deal with the confrontation, but the post-incident, the judgment training involved and required for making such a split-second decision. And then the post-incident decision-making and interview process is very difficult. So I think it'll be something good for our residents to take advantage of as well. Of course, with the coming of the warm weather, we're looking for our residents to, once again, start participating and even up the ante in our private surveillance registry so that if a resident has a private video surveillance system, that they can register with the city. We won't bother the residents unless there's an incident close by, and at that point, we'll contact you and ask for access to your private surveillance that's exterior to your house, that's outside the house, in the hopes that we can capture someone who may have committed a crime or something. We've done that in the past. We've gotten some pretty good footage from some of our residents, and we'd like to expand on that program. The other, the final point in community engagement is we're looking for every opportunity to come out to any of the community groups, the Lions Club, the Swim Club, any group that's interested in having an officer, myself, or the deputy chief, or any one of us come out and talk to the citizens about what we do, what their expectations are, what they'd like to see us do. We're hard chargers for that, so we look forward to any opportunities. So if anybody's interested, you can certainly contact me at my email, ebrown@darieneill.gov. So we look forward to those opportunities. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, you just mentioned, though, with the weather getting better, community park, what's time? When do you typically start seeing, you know, your officers, you know, sitting in community? And I think I might have talked to you about this in the past, instead of having a car all the way in the park, and we're talking about community engagement, having those officers actually inside the park, you know, where community's at?
That's one of the things that we will be stressing this year, that the officers shouldn't just be present. The whole point of it is not just to deter crime, but also to engage the community. So that will be one of the focuses. Usually, we start about the first of May. This, with the weather getting warm, if we sustain the same type of weather we had today, then we'll probably, we'll be definitely starting it earlier.
Okay. Chief, one of the things you did regarding that, I think it was last year, maybe the year before, also, you actually had the officers hand out a letter explaining why they're there.
Yes.
So if they come in contact with a resident, they know maybe nothing specific happened, but they're there as part of the community engagement.
Well, part of moving towards a community-oriented police department is getting everybody being willing to physically engage. Some of the officers, and this is systemic throughout law enforcement, aren't very comfortable initially just interacting. And, you know, it's much easier to sit in your car and just answer the calls. But ultimately, what we want is every police officer capable of not only interacting on a non-confrontational basis, but being able to speak and give presentations and everything else. Because a police department is not separate and apart from the community. It's an integral part of the community, and so we want all the officers being able to perform in that manner. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
Let's move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number fourteen fifteen twenty-one in the amount of five hundred sixty-three thousand, fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended March fifth in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. For a total be approved of eight hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight. be approved of $825,868.67.
A motion to approve? Alma Belkey, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions for the treasurer? Then the role, please.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Treasurer, you want to go over the monthly report?
The revenue expenditure report for the 10-month period ended February 28th, 2015, reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $11,805,603. Expenditures of $9,353,517, for current balance of $3,356,839. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $5,630,126. Expenditures of $4,674,951, for current balance of $1,974,508. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue, $678,115. Expenditures of $525,089, for current balance of $305,481. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, $2,192. Expenditures of $192,386, for current balance of $116,241. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue, $4,476,473. Expenditures of $3,712,816. Current balance of $6,183,254. And the capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue, $502,422. Expenditures of $497,750, for current balance of $18,085.
Questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? Then let's move on. Standing committee reports, Alma Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that the Municipal Services Committee is meeting next Monday, March 23rd, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, April 6th, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
And Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next meeting of the police committee would be April 20th at 6:00 PM at the police department training room. However, I won't be there, so we didn't have a meeting today, so that, I guess we can confirm that meeting date at the next council meeting, or if the two aldermen are present, they can proceed with that meeting.
Very good, will do. Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related, any of the aldermen? I think we discussed most everything under our work session, but is there any questions for any, from any of the aldermen? Then let's open it up to the floor. Is anyone in the audience that are here to address any of the items on the agenda this Then let's move on to old business, there being no old business, I'll move right on to the consent agenda. We have items A through F on our consent agenda. The first item is a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax here to Leveed, which is our ordinance O-28-12. The next item is a motion to authorizing the 2015 Emerald Ashbor Treatment Plan Phase Two, and approving a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the treatment plan with True Green Inc. in an amount not to exceed $165,000. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2015 ditch maintenance program between the City of Darien and Scorpio Construction in an amount not to exceed $291,715. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Darien and the Village of Woodridge for the purpose of sharing costs for design and construction engineering, and the construction of the 83rd Street roadway improvements, in an amount not to exceed $115,000. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute another intergovernmental agreement between the City of Darien and the County, DuPage County, for the purpose of sharing costs for the design and construction, engineering and construction of the Plainfield Road and Bailey Road intersection traffic signalization project, and the Plainfield resurfacing project. And the last item under the consent agenda is a motion to approve a resolution approving an engineering agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering for the Phase One and Phase Two engineering for Plainfield Road resurfacing, and Phase Two engineering for the Bailey Road traffic signalization in an amount not to exceed $196,795. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? No discussion, I'm sorry. The role, please.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
All items have been approved, the next item is new business, and there being no new business. I'd move right on to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the council. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that this Sunday, March 22nd, the Darien Lions Club will be holding their annual pancake breakfast from 7 till 1 at Eisenhower Junior High.
Alderman MacIver?
I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
Regarding, now that the triage program for the ashbores has been awarded to True Green, is there, is that going to be the residents' program as well?
No.
Nope.
The residents' program is under Tree and Turf, I believe it is, and there's a separate informational letter on Darien Connect that residents can go to, and it gives basically the menu of the various sizes, along with the cost. So again, the question is for the residents that are listening to this, if you have a private property, an ash tree on your private property, please, and I don't have the information readily available, but go into the Darien Connect or give us a call at 852-5000, and we'll refer you to who the suggested vendor is for the private property ashbor treatment.
Thank you, Dan. The Rotary Club of Darien will be having their Taste of Route 66 on March 24th. It will be held at Carriage Greens Country Club. The time is from 6 until 9, and the food, and the money that we will be collecting for this fundraiser goes to feed 100 children right here in the Darien school system, grades kindergarten through second. That's, we don't have enough money to do more than that. The program is called Food for Kids, and basically, it's a backpack program. When the kids go home on Friday, the teachers put food into their backpacks. So if you'd like to join us on March 24th at Carriage Greens, please feel welcome.
When you say "we," you mean the Rotary Club, not the City of Darien?
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the Rotary Club of Darien, that is the city clerk. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, and announcements? Then I'd like to open it up to the...
Madam Mayor, Paul.
I'm sorry, Paul.
That's okay. Next Thursday, the 26th, at 11:00 AM, over at the police training room, Combat is going to come out and do a program for our seniors, give them some ideas and tips to save on their energy and possibly help them with their energy bills.
And we'll get that on Direct Connect, right?
Yes, that'll be going on.
Okay, website, every vehicle we have?
Yes, we have a list of seniors, as well as...
That's right, now the elder service officers have the information too on, yeah, okay. Dan?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, just to get back to Alderman MacIver's question in regards to the Emerald Ashbor for private property, I have the information, I can give it to the residents there if they'd like. Again, the award, suggested vendor is Tree and Turf Professionals. This is a courtesy quote the City of Darien went out for. Again, it's Tree and Turf Professionals, and the phone number is 630-759-7389. The contact there is Lyle McGinn, that's M-C-G-I-N-N. Also, email address is L-M-C-G-I-N-N at treeandturf.com. Again, questions for us, please feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul, did we ever find out what happened with the power outage in Combat?
They're still investigating it. They also did mention that they will be doing work tonight, starting at 4:00 AM. They don't expect any outages, but they're working on that same area that...
But no updates or anything?
No.
Do we know which transformer line it was that was affected? It was quite an unusual area.
Yeah, it was a large area, and again, they have some maintenance going on, but they've given me no other information at this point.
Alderman Marques, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Alrighty. And no one in the audience wanted to address us, then I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.